Okay, good evening, everyone. This is the meeting of the Rutland Town Select Board for the first meeting in 2022, January 4th. It is six o'clock. We are zooming and we are also here in person. So please start the meeting by joining me with the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We have orders here in the room. Don signed, Sharon signed, I have signed. JP and Joe, when you're around, please do come in and sign them and they'll be ready to go. The approval of the Select Board minutes for December 21st. They're in your packet. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the minutes of the December 21st Select Board meeting. Any additions, deletions, corrections? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Minutes.
File up any minute.
Oh, yes, it's noted that you weren't there. Thanks, Joe.
Yep.
All right. This is where we would ordinarily take up any requests from members of the public who are not already on the agenda. Are there any, we don't have a lot of time because we have two folks who are on scheduled to be on, but do we have anyone who wishes to be heard?
Yes.
Okay. Sawyer?
Yes. So, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I have a, something I'd like to read to you from the governor's office in regards to Byron's retirement. So I just have a letter from him to read, like, you know, for public record.
All right.
Congratulations on your retirement. After 21 years of dedicated service to the town of Rutland, thank you for your commitment to public service. You've done a great job over the years to make sure Rutland Town's roads were maintained even through tropical storms and other natural disasters, as well as having taken on additional roles as the town needed you to. You made the Rutland Town Highway Department a better place to work, and your work has not gone unnoticed. I join your friends, family, and colleagues in celebrating your achievements and recognizing your contributions to your community. I hope you enjoy a happy and healthy retirement. Sincerely, Phil Scott.
Okay, thank you very much, Sawyer. Appreciate that.
Sawyer?
Yes?
Would it be possible for us to get a copy of that that we could frame and put in here somewhere?
Well, that would be nice, but I think no. You could, you could ask Byron, I suppose, but my answer is no. I actually have one other, what's that?
I just said thank you, but if you have one other thing, go ahead.
Um, yes, one, one other thing. I would maybe say that in regards to the finishing out of his vacation pay and sick time pay that I think is on the agenda for this evening. If you do see to pass that, perhaps Carrie could make an exception and instead of waiting an additional time period before cutting those checks, another two weeks or whatever it is, maybe making a special check afterwards. Seeing as how it was her cockamamie idea that got her in that in the first place, maybe that would be a way of her making up for it.
I really don't think you have standing.
Thank you, Sawyer. We will be checking.
I really, let me respond to that. I really don't think you have standing to make that request. That's personal to Byron.
Of course I do. I'm a taxpayer. He was a town employee for 21 years and, you know, I, I think he kind of got a raw deal on the way out, so of, of course, I have a right to make that request. I'm a, I'm a taxpayer and a citizen and a voter.
So you, you, so will you request I get my pay early too?
Well, if, if you'd like your pay early, apparently you can do that.
I'm not aware.
Let's kind of move along. I would point out that Carrie is not, not at work she, this week. It was a planned absence, so we're not going to be able to accommodate that wish anyway, and Susan is out straight, so. And we will be taking this up a little bit later, so unless.
Well, he, Byron, at the meeting, said it's no problem. I don't care. Wait a couple of weeks. That's not an issue, so.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Okay, now.
Mary, I've got something to say.
Yeah?
Okay. I, I don't like this gentleman's referring to our town treasurer and her cockamamie ideas. This was not anything to do with her. She was confused and asked the board for guidance as to how it should be done. This is her first time with somebody leaving before whatever, and the board made the decision, not her, and this gentleman owes her an apology because it wasn't anything to do with her. And I, and I'm offended by his remarks and whatever else to come in here and say that. And I am also a tax, taxpayer and a voter, and I don't appreciate one of our town employees being referred to like that, and that's inappropriate and unacceptable behavior.
Okay, if you're taking responsibility for that, then I suppose I will apologize to Carrie. I'm sorry, Carrie, if it was simply misguided on your part, but the board did vote on it, and so maybe it was the board's cockamamie idea. We'll put that on you then.
Thank you, Sawyer. Anything else, or can we move on to other things this evening? Okay. So we're going to take a couple of items out of order. We have participating this evening. Andrew Simons from AM Peish, who's going to walk through the audit that his firm completed. And also because it's related, we have Town Council Kevin Brown. There's going to be some, there's, there's a ballot question that may be proposed and some other things, so it's helpful to have our, both of our experts on at the same time. Andrew, we'll start with you.
All right, good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Good. All right, I hope everyone had a happy holidays. The board should have four reports from the audit in front of you. Oh, we are only going to focus on the audited financials for tonight. If there are any questions on the other reports, you can certainly email me or give me a phone call at the office to discuss further. So just a reminder that the town does operate on the modified cash basis of accounting, which is a special purpose framework. This is the main reason why the financials that you're looking at do not report receivables, payables, fixed assets, or long-term debt. Another quick reminder is that we are independent of the town, and therefore we are not part of the town's internal control structure. Board and management should review policies and procedures periodically to ensure that controls continue to be adequate based on the size and complexity of the town. So we'll jump right into the audit report. You will notice that the format of the report.
Andrew?
Yes.
Is that this one?
It is. It is. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so you'll notice that the format of the report is consistent with the previous year. The only big change is that we were required to implement GASB 84. What GASB 84 did is it moves the education property taxes collected on behalf of the school district and the state, and it moves those from the general fund to the fiduciary fund, so we'll see that in the report. There was no other new accounting pronouncements that were adopted during the fiscal year, so again, the report should be relatively consistent to the previous year. The audit report date is December 27th, 2021. This was the date that the report was issued. And the audit does cover a period from July 1st of 2020 to June 30th, 2021. So if we flip to page one and two of the report, this is the independent auditor's report. This is probably the most important piece of the audit. The town did receive an unqualified or clean opinion, same as last year. And this basically means the financial statements are presented in all material respects in accordance with the applicable financial reporting framework, which again is the modified cash basis of accounting. If you flip to pages three and four, these are known as the government-wide financial statements. These combine the town's governmental and the business-type activities. We're not going to focus on these two pages. We're actually going to focus on pages five through 12. So on page five, this is your governmental fund balance sheet, and what I'm going to do is just give you the highlights of the data and not go over every single balance that's included in there. So major funds such as the general fund and the fire depreciation fund, they are separated into their own columns, while all non-major funds are aggregated together into one column. This includes the police, recreation, highway depreciation funds. So down towards the bottom, which includes the fund balances, the town was able to maintain the $1.5 million in opening balance cash with any surplus allocated to the capital improvements fund. So the $1.5 million that incorporates those three committed fund balances, and that equals the $1.5 million. This is important. This allows the town to open its fiscal year and not have to borrow money while waiting for the tax revenues to flow in. Now, on that note, the $1.5 million was voted on years ago, and it is something that the board could look into and possibly reducing if they feel that that balance is too high, and we could reallocate that fund balance to cover other important areas. This has been discussed with Carrie Clark. She is performing an analysis, and she'll report to the board what she determines to be an appropriate opening balance for the, for the town. Also on page five, you'll notice that there is approximately $2.4 million in restricted cash, which is restricted for various purposes: long-term debt, capital improvements, the depreciation funds, et cetera. One of the important ones on here is the long-term debt repayment. We have about $149,000 remaining at the end of June 30th, 2021. This is the bond payments that relate to the fire station. We had set aside originally a million dollars to start covering those payments. What's left in there is going to cover fiscal year '22, and then it'll be drawn down to zero at that point. So it is important to note that future debt service payments will potentially have to be included in the property tax calculation, so just keep that in mind. On page six of the audit report, this is the governmental income statement. Again, just the highlights from here, you'll see under the general fund column, we did have a surplus which was expected. I'll go into that in more detail in a minute. The fire depreciation fund did have a deficit of $517,000, which was expected. The town purchased a new fire truck which comes out of the depreciation fund, which results in a deficit for the year. The other non-major governmental funds do have an accumulated surplus of $124,000 for an overall governmental fund surplus of $361,000. So more on the general fund surplus if you turn to page seven. This is the budget-to-actual report. This is very important for the town, especially because you're modified cash basis. So looking at the variance column, going to highlight a couple of larger items. Local options tax, you'll notice came in over budget of about $203,000. This is a difficult item to budget for. It does fluctuate each year, and the town has been pretty conservative on budgeting for this item. Further down, general government expenditures were under budget for the year. This is mainly due to savings and insurance expense and lower legal fees. The Public Works, which has a large favorable variance of $423,000. This is directly related to the pandemic and the suspension of the paving projects for 2020, and those paving projects will be combined with the 2021 and will be reflected in the 2022 financials. So overall, total revenue is over budget $247,000. Total expenditures were under budget by $497,000, resulting in that surplus that we see on the previous statement. Well, next move on to page eight, which is the town's proprietary funds. This is the water and sewer fund. Because you're on cash basis, we only report cash and the fund balance, so it's not a lot to show on the balance sheet. Next page, page nine, this is the income statement for the proprietary fund. You'll notice that we do have a deficit for the year of $108,000. And again, this is mainly due to the engineering and construction costs related to the Ranberry Road waterline project. So again, this was planned for. We knew this was coming down the line, and again, it resulted in a deficit. But we still have a strong net position of about $1.2 million as of June 30th, so no concerns. On page 10, which is the proprietary fund cash flow statement, this relates directly to the income statement and balance sheet, and again, no concerns on this statement. Page 11 gets into the fiduciary funds. And on here, you'll notice there's trust funds in a new custodial fund category. The trust funds include the three endowment funds, which are restricted for certain purposes related to cemetery and the fire station. The custodial fund column, this was the requirement under GASB 84, which I mentioned previously. And on the next page, page 12, you'll notice that we are displaying the property taxes that are collected on behalf of the state in the school district. The town acts as a passer entity for these property taxes. So again, they were required to be removed from the governmental fund to the fiduciary fund. Also on page 12, you'll notice that we do have a positive change in net position for the trust funds, and that's mainly due to realized gains on the investments, interest and dividends, and a lot of expenses for the year. Page 13 through 26, these are the footnotes that supplement the financials. Again, not a lot has changed from the previous year, so I'm not going to spend much time on the footnotes. I will draw your attention to page 20. And as I previously discussed, there is a restricted fund balance on the balance sheet for the fire station long-term debt. This is the remaining long-term debt schedule. Again, that remaining restricted fund balance will cover the first maturity for fiscal year '22, and then property taxes will potentially need to be raised to cover the remaining payments. The last page I want to draw your attention to is the final page, which is page 26. It's under Note 10, Subsequent Events. As part of the pandemic, the American Rescue Plan Act, which is known as ARPA, the town is a recipient of some of those funds. And just to know, the town has received approximately $615,000 subsequent to year end, and is expected to receive another $615,000 at some point in time. So the important thing with the ARPA, under certain situations, if you expend more than $750,000 in one fiscal year, you may be required to have what's known as a single audit performed. So just want to make sure the board is well aware of that. I'll provide you more information as necessary. And Carrie is well aware of it, and she is monitoring the expenditures that come out of this account. So that, that wraps up the audit report that we did. Again, I want to thank Carrie and Susan for all their help throughout the audit process. They made it very saved us a lot of time, made a very easy process for us to go in there and do what we needed to do to get, to accomplish the audit. Does anybody have any questions or concerns related to the audit report that I presented?
Any Select Board members? None from Sharon. Don's thinking. Joe? Any questions?
No, I'm good. No, I'm good, Mary. Andrew always does a pretty good job explaining that, so it's understandable.
Right? JP?
Well said.
Okay. Andrew did touch on something that we had asked about, and that is the $1.5 million cash to open. The, I, the question, and we were considering a ballot item for town meeting. The question is whether we should take maybe half a million and move it with the voter's permission, hence the ballot question, move it from cash to open over to the fund that makes the payments on the Center Rutland Fire Department bond. Carrie was, we, we chatted a bit. Carrie was going to go back and find out how much cash to open we have actually used in the past three or four years, three years, I think. And I don't know if she, well, she's out this week. I don't know as she was able to generate that number. But it appears that $1.5 million maybe more than is needed to maintain in cash to open, and we could afford to move some over to start paying on the bond. Andrew, do you have any sense? Were you able to get any figures from Carrie on that?
I did not before the holidays, no. I know she was working on analysis to do so, but I've not seen any numbers from her.
Okay. So, yeah, Don?
Andrew, on the, on page seven.
Yes.
Over-budget expenditures. That $745,000 now, is that to be expended based on the policies that were set in previous years for the allocation of, of surpluses? Where does that go?
So this, yes, so the surplus, the way it has been structured is that we make sure that we replenish the $1.5 million opening balance. Any surplus beyond the $1.5 million, as it was written in the ballot years ago, gets swept over to the general capital improvements fund for what the town determines to be a capital improvement expenditure.
Is that where that $745 will go then?
A good chunk of it is showing up, yes. So there was a significant increase, and again, these are not comparative financials. It'd actually be easier if they were. But you would have seen on page five that general capital improvement fund balance has actually increased, so it's absorbed some of that surplus that's come over. Now, that surplus of $745,000, that was general fund. That does get reduced by the deficit coming from the fire depreciation fund. So your overall surplus for the total governmental funds that gets allocated is $361,000.
And the $361,000 would then go?
Correct. It replenished the $1.5 to ensure that we maintain that level of opening balance. The excess above and beyond that $1.5 did go to the capital improvement fund. That is correct.
With one exception.
Balance of the capital improvement fund?
The capital improvement fund has a current fund balance of $851,000.
Thank you.
That includes the $361?
Yes, the bulk of it.
Okay. Thank you.
The, the only thing that isn't swept over are, is the highway or the public works number, because that's retained, and that goes to paving and other road improvements after. Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry about that. Yes, that is correct. That is excluded from it.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, I would just note, Mary and Andrew, that the ballot item from 2015 about surplus monies being used for cash to open, it says, oh, at least the copy I have, and I think that's what, how it was voted, but it says up to $1.5. So the board could decide to do less to be, and it would still go into the capital reserve account, I think, based on the other ballot questions that were approved back in 2015 town meeting.
So are you saying if we wanted to move half a million over, we wouldn't need the voter's approval? I think I'd rather get it, but.
No, I think, yeah, I think that's, that's right. The way those ballot questions were structured was up to one, up to $1.5 of surplus monies to be used for cash to open, so. Then we, because we had a little over $3 million in surplus back in 2015, so we put $1 million plus into paying down the, to be set aside to pay down the bond, so that took care of part of that big surplus, and then we had $700,000 authorized by the voters to pay for the highway garage, which was done, and, and the remainder has been cash to open, and then there's been a surplus each, somewhat of a surplus each year, other than highway. The highway is the one place where you can rule money over. Otherwise, if it's a surplus, it's either got a, voters have to decide what's done with it, and, because you can't accumulate it. And so a deposit of up to $1.5, Carrie looks and says, gosh, we don't really need that much. It can go under the, you know, I think the last ballot question from 2015 says, shall the town deposit any budget surpluses that may become available in the future, future fiscal years into a reserve fund to maintain, be maintained as a capital account for construction, maintenance, repair, or improvement of town buildings and infrastructure? So that's where the new surpluses go. And if, if we decided that it looked like less cash to open was needed, that's where the money would go.
Okay. But best practice, should we also get the voters, do we need a ballot item, I guess, is my question?
Well, it said up to one, I, I think the question that was approved was, shall the town deposit up to $1.5 of surplus monies into a reserve fund for cash to open? And if, I don't know that we need to go back to do something less.
Plus, they're going to have enough valid items to be considering.
Yeah, well, with the caveat that if the town puts less money in cash to open, it's, we already know where it's going, because it's surplus monies. It's going into their capital reserve account automatically.
I don't believe it needs voter approval.
Well, I think. Andrew, any thought on this?
I would defer to Kevin, but I do agree the way he interprets the wording on it.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so I, I don't think you need a voter approval to do less than $1.5.
Okay.
Now, Kevin, they're looking to allocate, so that they do peel off $500,000, they'd like to reserve that for the long-term debt payments, because that's going to be down to zero at the end of this fiscal year. So is that the saying that that would not require a voter approval instead of moving it straight to the capital?
Well, you know, I was a little unclear where that, is that 500, is that surplus money?
From previous years, yes.
Yeah, and so we already deposited a million into a reserve fund as of 2015, and now that's been spent down to, to, to nothing.
Correct.
Do we need to do, you know, we, we do have that capital reserve account, and yeah, I guess if we're going to put money there, or not put money there and want to continue to apply it to the bond payments instead, we'd need to get voter approval for that.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
As we're sending it to a different place, a different reserve fund than the voters told, approved back in 2015.
Correct.
Right.
Well, I, I do have a question, Andrew, or, or, or anybody on the Select Board. You can see that the fourth ballot item for 2015 was, shall the town use up to $50,000 of the approximately $200,000 remaining of the fire construction bond proceeds to pay for the removal of underground fuel storage tanks at McKinley Ave? I assume, I assume that was approved and that's, that will, that was done. My question is, is there any money from the? My question is, is there any money from the construction, fire station, construction bond proceeds? Left, or did we, for instance, pay Giancola's roof repairs out of the bond fund? But those weren't, those, those weren't, wouldn't have absorbed 150, so is there any money left over, Andrew, or does anybody know?
Yes, so there is, as of June 30th, there was 50, approximately 55,000 left in the Fire Station Construction Fund. Part of the bond.
So there, there, the statute does speak to this and I'd have I think it can be applied to the bond payments, I don't think there's anything else that needs to be done to, to do so, but that, that's an option as well, if the bond payments are like 130 a year, 90 plus interest in November, then interest in May. That's something to think about as well, I can, you know, consult the statute if the more specifically if the town, if the select board wants and if the town wants.
Actually, I think we've, we've dealt with that because we got a letter from the bond folks saying we have 54,000 and, you know, 55,000. And we had three options, one was capitals, capital stuff at the Center Rutland Fire Station. One was other capital improvements and then if, if neither of those, then we could put it to a new capital project. And, or no, we could use it to pay the existing bond, but I think the select board voted for the second option, which is to put it toward a, a new fire station, police station at McKinley.
Okay.
So, so we, we, we did exercise that option and that's
Okay.
where it's, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure that's what we did.
We did.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that money's sitting there pending decisions on the McKinley Ave Fire Station, safe, Public Safety Building.
Correct.
Yes.
And plus, we have 30,000 coming in that is here, yeah, in, 20,000 and 10,000, Kevin, from the negotiated settlement for work at the Center Rutland Fire Station and that also is going over, I think we voted on that, right? We, we voted to put that also toward McKinley.
Yep.
New construction.
Yep.
So.
I don't remember that one.
Well, we'll double check, but I'm pretty sure, so.
Well, it was in large measure reimbursing for work than that, that was done at Center Rutland. And however, that, that might have been paid for out of reserve, that work might have been paid for out of reserve funds.
Yes. Yeah, well, I don't know, I mean, it's possible it could have been paid for by because we had more money in the bond than what we needed to actually construct, so it could have been.
That's my question, did we, did we pay for that Center Rutland, those charges out of the out of the unpaid, unused construction bond monies, or did we pay for it out of a reserve fund and, and now would be reimbursing the reserve fund?
I don't know. You got us, I don't know.
Mary, is that, are we talking about the repairs to Center Station?
Right.
Yes.
All of that, I think, everything, all those upgrades for the ventilation system, all the stuff that was done wrong, all of that came out of the bond. That's, that's why that 150,000 that was there is down to 54. Because I believe we paid for everything, the work Giancola did and everything else came out of that extra money. And that's how we got, that's how we got to the level we're at, I mean, I think Carrie can verify it, you know, at some point, but I I believe that's how we got there.
That was my guess and there was some parking lot paving and other things as well, as I recall.
All of the mistake fixing, Kevin, that's what we spent the money on, all of the mistake fixing.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for our auditor? Andrew Simons. Thank you, Andrew, it's reassuring and I, I just, I want to point out again that I think this is like the I don't know how many years that, that I've seen clean audit results. And I'm, I'm grateful and this, you know, this goes to the other people who have held the position of town clerk and treasurer over the past several years, they've consistently been good and solid and our numbers are good and our procedures are good. Always room for some improvement, of course, but thank you, thank you to them and thank you to Andrew.
Are we, Mary, are we going to, or is Andrew going to talk about maybe at a later date, there was some interest or about what what the ARPA monies can be used for, is that for a later date?
Um, the pending question I had on that and, and I raised it with Andrew and Carrie was the lost revenue calculations. Because as I understand it, we can use ARPA funds to the extent that we've lost revenue to, and to make up the loss in revenue and then that frees up that portion of the ARPA funds entirely for whatever use we want to. So obviously, we were interested in what the lost revenue, revenue was. And I know Carrie had done some calculations, Andrew had done some modifications, suggesting that some things that were added in probably should not have been. And I'm, back to Andrew, do we have a lost revenue calculation, a modified calculation now?
Uh, it's still a process, I gotta meet with Carrie sometime in the near future to finalize it. I do think it's gonna be significantly less than what was originally calculated. I'm guessing 100,000 or less than that. I think once I do work with Carrie on it, I believe Nemrick will go through the calculation as well and just verify the authenticity of it. So it may be worthwhile to have them do a secondary review once I meet with Carrie.
Okay.
So that, that 615, I think you said, 615,000 we get uh, this year and then another 615,000 to come. Some of that will be used to take care of the lost revenue to, to supplant that or replace that and then after that is done, well, then there's, are there any restrictions for what the town can put that ARPA money to?
Capital projects that were affected by the COVID qualify, I think the Public Safety Building would fit under that.
Well, that, that, that's what I'm getting to, is that, is that what Andrew thinks?
Yes.
Good.
Okay. Alright, any other questions or comments for Andrew? I know he's got a, maybe another town or two to talk to tonight.
Not tonight.
Okay.
Good job, Andrew, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thanks, Andrew.
Okay. Um, so we also have Kevin Brown on, as you know. And were there things that we needed to do? Because Kevin's our town attorney that need to be confidentially discussed in executive session.
Well, I have questions about the bond process that probably should be done in executive session.
Okay. Just as a reminder, so that we can discuss it before we go into executive session, Kevin has drafted and we've approved the, with one preposition amendment, the road commissioner ballot item, which is going on. Kevin has drafted, which, the cannabis sale, actually it's two parts. The cannabis sale resolutions for the voters' consideration. We've just discussed cash, cash to open and it sounds like if we want to use half a million for the bond payments, we will need a voter approval of that.
I think that's right.
Then the bonding question that JP wants to ask, so that's what I have on the agenda for Kevin.
Well, le, legal advice can all, is, it's select board's my client and so legal advice is privileged, so that's always appropriate to speak to the attorney in executive session, but it's, it's your prerogative.
Okay. Uh, is there a motion to go into executive session to hear legal advice from town council?
So move.
So move.
I can.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of executive session, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. On the phone, so we're out of exec, when we're recording, we're out of executive session at 7:15.
So I would make a motion, yeah, I would make a motion that we approve the two questions on marijuana for town voters.
Okay, motion's made, is there a second? Motion's made and seconded that we approve the two ballot items on marijuana for the voters to act upon at town meeting. Discussion. No, if not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 I think we're all in favor, no opposed, so the motion carries. Okay. So that, just to recap where we are, under new business, we have covered A, meeting with Andrew from AM Peish. We've covered B, meeting with town council. Let's see, let's go back up and cover Walt Tripp and Jason Bathalon, I think Walt's doing highway, Jason's doing public works, Watersmore. And thank you for your patience, all of you appreciate that.
Late last night with the roads the way they were.
Yeah, we just, right now, it's just normal winter maintenance, two ice storms, we got through only two phone calls saying the roads might be slippery, but we got through it, other than that, we picked up a big oak tree that was cut earlier, cleaned that up and did a couple oil changes today, but other than that, it's just winter work.
Okay, um, we okay on salt supply?
Okay, on.
Salt.
Salt, yeah.
Okay, good. Uh, there was something in here, um. The
Discussing.
AOT, yeah, go ahead.
Um, well, this, the, there is a discussion about the radios, Mary, that was under highway.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and I think, you know, Bill did some reaching out and I think Walt and Jason are on board with this and I've talked to Bill a little bit about it and I don't know the rest of the board, but for the six years I've been here on the board, I've been trying to encourage highway to get its own radio frequency and have a truck to truck, truck to highway garage communication. And this is a, a pretty good, I don't know, hopefully everybody got a chance to read this, but I think this is a good opportunity for us and, and I'd like to see us move forward with this for the communication, using, you know, in the past, practice has been cell phone and, and that's difficult at most when you're trying to drive. So, I, I think, yeah, I think we should move forward with this project.
So I take that Joe is making the motion and JP just seconded? Is that what I heard? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm looking for B?
Item E, yes.
Okay. I know. Alright, why don't you do a quick recap, because I'm not finding my thing.
Here it is, right here, Mary.
Okay, thank you. This is two-way radio digital repeater proposal for Rutland Town Highway, this is from Advanced Answering Service repeater service and two-way radio rental plan. $29 per radio per month and 29 per PC-based dispatch interface per month. Uh, radio installation is $99 per radio one time. And that's the proposal. Motion's been made and seconded, any questions, discussions, do you folks work with this?
Now, where's the money gonna come from for this, if it hasn't been budgeted?
Do we have it under? Okay, that's, that's the question, where's the money gonna come from?
Billy is the one that has sort of set this up, so.
Okay, right, well, do you, Joey, do you know where the money's coming from?
Well, I, I didn't get that far, Mary, but I'm wondering, I was looking to see if we had a miscellaneous account or a new equipment for this budget and I do believe that we might need to add a little bit to the budget that will be voted on. We, we might have to add a little, on a column in there for that. There is a new equipment. It's about 1,500, 14 or 15 a year.
Yeah, it's, it's for four radios, it's 1,400 a year. So that's one for each vehicle plus the garage. And then there's a, there's, they do the installation, it's $99 per station. So it's $1,800 initially and $1,400 a year.
Does that include the handhelds?
No, well, it's four radios, it's, we can choose mobiles or handhelds.
Okay.
We can add the handhelds, there's no installation for handhelds.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Later if we wanted to.
Okay.
Um, so I'm looking at the budget, but I don't know how much has been spent so far this year, but we do have a miscellaneous line for 2,000, we have new equipment line for 2,000, we have a supply line for 5,000. Let's see, do we have a miscellaneous was the question, right?
What was the equipment line, because this will be equipment.
That would be.
New equipment, 2,000.
Well, let's make it 4,000.
Well, no, I'm sorry, this is for this current year, because we're buying.
We can take out of that.
Oh. What's left?
Yeah, let's.
You know, what's left?
We don't.
See, we don't get a statement that's saying how, how much the balance is.
Well, we do periodically when Carrie prints them for us, if we ask her, she does it, but we don't happen to have the current one.
Oh, there's also equipment rentals, which I think goes mostly to summer contracting.
I believe so.
So the short answer is there's various categories, we don't know how much is left in any one of them, so what's your pleasure with this?
I think we could take it out of miscellaneous for this budget and then maybe add a radio or, or just, or just a, the new equipment, just double it for next year. And all that isn't really new equipment, it, it is a rental and it should probably show that, radio lease, maybe?
Well, or put it under equipment rentals and.
Right, that would be.
Yeah, that would, that would be fine.
Yeah. Okay, so you've got in front of you the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries, so you're gonna get some radios, which makes me feel better, because I know you guys are out there sometimes on your own and I'd feel a whole lot better.
I'm trying to do it on your phones, can be dangerous.
It's illegal to begin with.
Yeah, yeah.
How long will it take to set this up, though?
They have some demo units right now, that they're already, they got yesterday. So, um, what, he'll have, they'll have an agreement for us to lay everything out. So maybe by the next meeting, I'll have that or the one after that, but they, they can, it's just programming, they just get programming and then it's just scheduling the installation of the actual stuff, so. Not, not a long time.
Um, I have one, Mary, I have a question for Walt.
Yep, go ahead.
Um, and I want to know if he wants the current radios and that's there installed, the, the current radio are some radios that are, come from the fire department that have the fire department's frequency and some others in there and whether he would like that also installed, so if in an emergency, the highway can get in contact with fire or vice versa, they will not be able to do that with a new radio system, this is a unique system that's UHF frequency versus what the fire department, so, um, it, it's up, I think that if they want those radios, we, we'll just, you know, make sure that's in that new truck.
Yeah, I think what we're planning is leaving the radios that we have in there now, because we have state dispatch and the fire department on there.
Okay, yeah. Did you hear that, okay, Joe?
I did. I just wanted to know what, what, yeah, I want to make sure, you know, we do what, what works best for them and go by their guidance.
Okay, so that's a yes, we'll leave the existing radios in. Okay, anything else on highway before we move to Jason?
Uh, F, F was a highway thing, he was going to come tonight, but I guess he's not here, so, but.
Oh, okay. There was a question about a culvert, so I guess we will, let's just refer that over to the highway committee anyway. Um, culvert replacement or fill-in of a culvert.
What, what the gentleman wants, is he wants, I think there's a picture that Bill sent to us. And on the side of that driveway is depression, and he wants that filled in. And at the, I, I would take the advice of our acting road commissioner not to do anything with that during the winter. Because putting stone, putting something in there could mess up the drainage for this time of year. And I, and I don't think we should monkey with anything this time of year. And that would be something that we could take a look at in the spring, because if that for some reason doesn't drain. With one of these wonderful fifty-degree rainy days, and we end up with a lake out there and then it freezes, we're going to have a mess. So I wouldn't tamper with anything, and it would be my suggestion that we discuss this. I've discussed it at length with Walt, and maybe we send Mr. Ellison a letter and tell him we are not going to make any adjustments to the drainage situation. During the winter, and we'll take a look at it during spring or warm, because if it turns into a lake in the middle of summer, it's just a puddle of water.
Well, so if we send it to the highway committee to look at. Is that okay?
I, I don't think, I don't think we need to do that, Mary, we don't need that step, really. I, I, I think this is, you know, Walt's really familiar with it, and, and he's opposed to filling it in at this time of year. And, and that's good enough for me, because that's, because I'm going to go look at it, I'm, I'm familiar with it, Sharon may not be, but I am. And, and it's, it's, yeah. It could ask for trouble.
So let's do this, let's see if Bill will send a letter. Um, to Mr. Ellison and indicate that we are not going to do anything during cold weather months. And that we will revisit the issue, um, and.
In the spring.
Spring, how's that?
Yeah, yeah, that, that would be perfect, yeah, because I, I just don't want to create a problem up there that, you know, we get a. Big lot of water, it floods over Easy Street or does something stupid, and now our highway guy's got to go out mitigate a problem that we created.
Fair enough.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Joe, so we'll send that letter. Um, Jason, water sewer.
How you doing?
We're doing.
I did my first rounds of meter checks on Monday, everything went well. Um, I had one house that had Xfinity box covering one of the meters, so I think, um. Bill was going to reach out. And, uh, talk to the homeowner to see if we can have Xfinity move that box one way or the other to.
Okay, good.
The excess, so that house was not, the meter was not read at the house.
Okay, the water main break, um, at, near Alderman's, do we have any more information about that?
Still haven't been able to get ahold of anybody to give me any information on that, and nor have we received any bill or any explanation on that.
Okay, so, we can wait on that, but there's nothing bad going on there right now, the, the issue was fixed.
Yeah, issue was fixed, um, they filled it back in and.
Okay.
It's totally operable.
Good. Any questions of the select board for either Walt or Jason?
Uh, there was one more thing, there was this mileage certificate.
Yeah, okay. This is the AOT mileage certificate, um, let's see, attached. And have you folks, this is. I think we do this every year, it is certifying the number of class one, two, and three roads that we have in, or class two and three roads we have in town. Um, and. Do we, have we had any changes over the past year, it's indicating? No? Um, so the question is, do we sign it, what usually? Signature of treasurer, town clerk. So it looks like this is for Carrie to sign?
Well, it's going to get filled in, but.
Okay.
This just got forwarded to me, so.
Okay.
I don't, we, we, I never done it in the past, but.
Yeah. I remember seeing it, so I'm, I'm familiar with this, okay. Um, this has to be done honor before February twentieth, twenty twenty-two, so if we could send this to, let's see, Walt?
Let me ask a question, Mary, on this.
Sure, go ahead.
If you look at the certificate. We have fifteen point oh eight miles of class two. Oh, thirty-two miles of class three. Okay, okay, I get it, no, no problem, I, I just, I wasn't adding right, I, I couldn't come up to fifty-eight, but I guess it is.
So I'm going to give what I have to Walt, Bill, could you put this on the agenda for me? Yes, thank you.
What are the difference between the class two and the class three, Walt?
You want this to Walt, you want that for anything?
Between class two and three?
Yeah.
I think class two is like, uh, your East Pittsford Road, Grove Street. Uh.
So connector, connector.
Connector roads, yes.
And class three.
Is your development roads.
Development roads, okay.
Then, like, class four, the quarter line road.
Yep.
Part of it.
Big part of it. The dirt.
The dirt part, yeah, right. Okay, so Bill's going to put that mileage certificate on the next meeting's agenda, so if you could check with Carrie. And make sure there haven't been any changes or whatever else you need to do.
Yeah, I'll check with her.
And then we'll, we'll take it up at our next meeting.
Okay.
All right, um, okay, that was good. Anything else from either of you, things are going okay, thank you once again for all of the good work you're doing. Um, and stay safe out there. Okay, thank you both.
Yep, thank you.
All right, Barbara Noyes-Pulling, town planning commission. Hi, Barbara.
Hi, happy twenty twenty-two.
Yes, thanks.
Everyone, yeah, um, I don't have much tonight, um, we, uh, the planning commission, the town planning commission. Is working away on those new ordinances, um, that we wanted to, um, to get.
Bill, can you turn that up, I can't hear it.
So we're working, does that sound better?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that, um, so we're working on, um, some new ordinances, um, one would be essentially like building permits. So that, uh, the town knew what was, uh, under construction in town. Um. There are, you know, there's some things you can do with ordinances and there's other things you can't, so we're working through that. Uh, we want to get a noise one together and also one, um, dealing with, uh, large animals, livestock. Um, so work continues on those. And the other thing I had tonight, um, I've been reading a lot of energy plans, uh, recently. Uh, two big ones have come out in the last month, one was the new comprehensive energy plan for the state. And the other one was the first climate action plan for Vermont. So, you know, I think this is going to be a front burner topic in the years to come, so. Kind of had a crazy idea that, um, that perhaps the planning commission and the energy committee. With the select board, um, could work together, um, and look at the, the enhanced energy plan. We passed for the town, look at the, um, action items, the things we said we would be doing. Um, and I think one approach to that could be to send out a survey to residents. And to see what their priorities would be, um, there's four pages of action items in that plan. Um, and I think, you know, if you were open to this, um, asking, you know. Presenting ten to fifteen of those in a survey and then asking for, for priorities. Um, might be interesting, um, and we could pick the ones that are not going to cost, uh, money. You know, they could be workshops, um, they could be EV, um, demonstrations, electric vehicle demonstrations. Things like that, um, or weatherization workshops. So that was my crazy idea for the, for the week, and, uh, if you have any thoughts on that. I'd love to hear them.
Um, JP's chair of our energy committee. So are you, you up for a meeting with the planning commission to do that, JP?
And what would the purpose be?
The purpose would be to, um, you know, go back to that list, those four pages of actions. Uh, that the town said it would, uh, it would, you know, undertake. And, you know, just, you know, go for some of the low hanging fruit there. And get, um, you know, I think, you know, with all the attention that will be coming with energy, um, you know, maybe getting our citizens. Our citizens, um, involved in some way, feeling like they were, they were doing something as well.
As in a questionnaire?
Yeah, yeah. And then maybe, um, you know, maybe the next step would be to help out with some of these workshops or something like that.
Okay.
Okay, I'll take that as, as an affirmative.
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, I'll have the planning commission, um, start thinking about the, start going through the four pages. And maybe, uh, coming up with a list and then we'll set up a, a joint meeting.
Sure.
Okay, okay, thank you. We can do that.
Yes, and, um, if you could send me what you send the planning commission so that. I can be prepared as well.
Yeah, we'll probably talk, but we have a meeting Thursday night, so we'll start talking about, you know, this was something I just came up with. So we'll start our discussion, uh, Thursday night about that, and I can send you what comes out of that meeting, does that sound good?
Sure, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Barbara or our planning commission? I think we, um, earlier we gave Bill a small issue to bring up with you regarding, um. Boundary line adjustment, so I think you're going to be hearing about that, so I'll leave that to Bill to discuss with you. Um. That's it, I think, Barbara, thank you very much, and happy new year to you and the planning commission.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ed Dumas, town police chief.
Gave you, uh, two. First off, I hope you guys had all good nee, a good new year.
Yes, thank you, me too.
So first off, I got this one here, it's the end of year stats, we had, uh. Thirteen hundred and thirty-seven complaints, and it said a hundred and thirty-nine arrests. It's actually a hundred and thirty-nine arrestable complaint. Complaints, not that we could find that many, uh, of the people who committed the crimes, or this is. Then the next page, it talks about, uh, the location, Route seven south is our number one problem.
Yeah.
Post road, most of those are traffic stops. Uh, Route four east is, uh, Home Depot, that whole area up there with retail thefts. Uh, and then Hanafers and Holiday Drive. The next page is just the top ten offenses, see retail thefts are way up. And then the, the last page is the arrestable offenses that we have.
Okay, this is good stuff, thank you.
You know, last one is, uh, for the last two weeks is that time period there we have. I didn't count them all, it's probably, probably a few, a little over fifty.
That's, that's a big increase, isn't it?
Yeah, we, well, we also have another officer now working.
Oh, right, okay.
So, and a lot of these is, uh. If you see, uh, the constables, uh, numbers here. You'll see that a lot of those are motor vehicle stops.
Okay.
The new system doesn't records everything as, uh, as a case, even motor vehicle stops, which makes it easy to keep track of, actually.
Okay.
I did have a conversation last week with, uh, the DCF deputy director there.
Oh.
Trish, too, I started a radio report, got this, never finished, it looks like you're going to have a, uh, a group down there, hopefully this Friday starting. Uh, probably twenty-four hours a day, patrolling just the fifty rooms that they're going to be renting from the, uh. Holiday Inn, so. We ta, I talked to him about, uh. You know, what can we do about if people are going over to Greenmount Plaza and committing crimes, can we move them out of that hotel? But the, the state doesn't want to get involved, uh, because they're going to get sued, they kick them out for that. So at some point in time, I will have to, I'll have to have a talk with the, uh, hotel management there and see if they can work out something. If they're going to not be good neighbors, then they need to, uh.
And we authorize the no trespass order for you, so that's another tool you'll have, yeah.
So that's what we'll, we'll do, but that's about all I have on the.
Okay.
Wait right now.
Yeah, well, that's quite a bit. Uh, questions for our town police chief?
You know, I don't really have any, Ed, except that we, we should, um, I don't know if you want to. You don't want to hang around, but we got to get together with Chris and you. And possibly JP and, and I, uh, w- once he gets those. I got, I haven't seen those plans yet, I didn't know JP, do you have any physical plans, I didn't look at them on the digital, but.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping to get, I'm going to get paper copies tomorrow, I, I emailed you some. I mean, emailed everybody, the ones that I was just alerted to today, and, um, I'll pick up the paper copies tomorrow.
I think Bill has them already, he's nodding his head over here, so I can get them. Um. Look, pick a time, if you would get together with Chris, you know, and just talk about what time's convenient for you. You guys got the work schedule and I don't, so you tell me what's convenient for you.
Is this for a full committee?
No.
This was, I think he's talking about.
Talking about the peg, the peg TV.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
So whenever you get, when Chris is available, because I work here, so I can, I can be here whenever you guys decide. Or Chris has, has another job, so I'll work around his schedule.
So you want me to s- schedule with Chris and then?
Yeah.
And then let you know when we, when we want to get together?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Anything else from anyone for Ed? I noticed those, um, stats that JP Fagnon's been out there on the road quite a bit.
Yes, he has.
So he's working out, okay?
He's okay.
Okay, good to know.
Gets into some trouble sometimes, we have to dig him out, but he's, he's doing okay.
Do what you can, thanks.
I think that's his happy place, Eddie.
All right, Chris Clark, town fire chief is. Not on the call, yes, he is, okay, Chief Clark.
How are you tonight?
I'm well, thank you.
Um, not too much to report, we've been a little busy with, uh. We had a structure fire on North Grove Street last, uh, Thursday, I believe, maybe two Thursdays ago. Last night, we sent a couple trucks to Shrewsbury, they had a fully involved house fire. Um. Other than those two major calls, we really haven't had too much going on in the last couple of weeks.
Well, that's good news.
Yeah, yeah.
Your annual meeting is?
What's that?
Your annual meeting is Wednesday now?
Yes, it got moved to tomorrow night.
Okay. All right, any questions for our town fire chief?
You heard that conversation I had with, uh, with Chief Dumas, Chris? When.
I did, yeah.
When, when would be a good time for you?
Uh, usually anytime after three thirty, but not this week.
Okay, pick a day next week.
I'll let you know, Don.
Let's see, okay, yeah.
All right.
All righty, if there's nothing else, thank you very much. All righty, if there's nothing else, thank you very much. Chief Clark, appreciate it. Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director.
Happy New Year to you all.
Thank you, you too.
New year to you.
I just have a couple of things, things are going well. Basketball for. Our grades, three through six, three through six start tomorrow. So hopefully that'll run nice and smoothly and the kids are ready to go. The ice rink, hopefully we'll get a little mother, help from Mother Nature and then maybe a little top off when, when we can. Other than that, I have, we had a rec committee meeting earlier and thank you for the people that attended that. Sharon, I don't know if you want to throw that out and then I'll jump in, or how do you want to do that?
Well. Mike has asked that we increase our depreciation fund, fund for rec from zero zero, point zero zero seven five to point zero one two five. To go on the ballot, and I'm gonna turn it back to you to explain and to explain. What's happening with the pool and what we're trying to gear ourselves up and for to protect ourselves.
So real quick, the pool, obviously we've had this discussion before and about four years ago, we increased the depreciation fund a little bit. To start squirreling away money so that when that day comes that we. Replace the pool, we'll have some funds. I'm asking that we increase. The depreciation fund up to what Sharon quoted, so that we can start squirreling away more money because we're in probably about an. An eight or a nine year window now where we really need to. Think about replacement of that pool. So my recommendation and my, my hope is that we can increase our depreciation fund so that we, at that point, will have close to. A million, if it were to go through and passed by the voters, we'll have about a million dollars in that fund to offset the cost. For a replacement pool so that we don't get stuck. Borrowing and paying more money. Than we would. I did some, some work. Our overall depreciation account that an average taxpayer, and I'm using my tax. Bill as an example, is that we pay for everyone's depreciation fund, police, highway, fire, recreation. Is seventy-three dollars and ninety-seven cents for the year. By my increasing it, we kind of ballparked that it would be an extra two or three dollars more. And once again, my house is appraised at. Two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, so I think I'm right in the middle there with most taxpayers. So it would just be a, a small increase in our municipal side. For the depreciation fund and it would just put us ahead of the game. When it's coming time for that pool replacement and we're not scrambling. And asking for more money, we've actually been fiscally responsible and planned for this event. And so that's why I'm asking to let it go to the voters, but an increase, as Sharon said, we're right now, we're at point zero zero. Seven five to point zero one two five. Right now, would that be money wise, that would be, right now, we bring in. Sixty-seven thousand dollars annually to the depreciation account, which is now split one-third for buildings and maintenance and two-thirds towards. The replacement cost of a pool. By increasing the depreciation account, we would bring in a hundred and twelve thousand dollars annually. And my goal would be to earmark a hundred thousand dollars of that to go towards the pool replacement. And that twelve thousand to go into the section for buildings and maintenance replacement. We currently stand. And according to the last year's budget fiscal year ending twenty twenty, we currently have two hundred and. Thirty thousand dollars in there already. That does not count this fiscal year, which if you did the math, that would be close to three hundred thousand because I did not spend. If anything, very little out of the depreciation fund this year, so I bet it's close to three hundred thousand as we speak. So within eight years, we would be at one point one million if. The voters approve that and I'm just looking for your guidance and hope that you will have that placed on this year's ballot, which I know the deadline is. Next on the thirteenth, so.
I'd make, I'd make a motion to approve that.
A second.
I'd make a motion to approve that.
Yep, good, JP making the motion, Sharon seconded, and this is to increase the. Recreation depreciation from, fund from zero zero seven five to, excuse me, point zero zero seven five to. Point zero one two five, so it looks like a fifty cent increase.
Yes, but I would also like just to confirm that we carry that the number, that number that we just read is correct. We don't want to pull what happened with police and have a digit in the wrong place, is my point.
Okay, so.
See what I mean?
Gotcha, so the intent is to increase it.
Yes, the intent, if, yes, the intent is to increase it, I just want to make sure that we don't go backwards with that, so. But that is the, right now, we're at, I believe, point, as she wrote in her, when I asked her last week. We're at point zero zero seven five and the increase would go to point zero one two five.
Yes.
So I just want to make, I don't want to need.
So we just.
Because it's on the ballot, I don't want to make a mistake on the ballot.
If you look at the, you know, last year's town report, page fifty-five, it has all of the.
Yep.
And then I was also looking at Andrew's. Report to see if I can find quickly what is in there already. For. Parks and Recreation in the.
Current?
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess I can leave that to you folks, too. Fun balances, wait a minute, Recreation. Looks like you have two hundred ninety-four thousand, two ninety-five, is that what you were thinking?
Pretty close, pretty close to three hundred thousand, yep. So we're, we're good, I just really want to. Get us to that point.
Okay.
Um, and I just.
So there is a motion by P, JP seconded by Sharon to. Increase the Recreation Depreciation Account.
Yeah, and to put it on the ballot.
And to put it on the ballot for this year's. Town meeting, okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries.
So do I see Bill about wording for that, or who?
Uh.
Wording for the ballot, I don't, I don't, who does that?
Um, let's check and see if we've got a previous, because we, we did it before with others.
It was for the transfer station.
We did it for the transfer state, yeah.
That was to establish.
Okay, um, if you can't find something quickly, we'll shoot an email off to Kevin, because he's drafting a couple of others. Okay.
Thank you, I just want to make sure that that, and then the only other thing I have, and thank you very much for that, I appreciate the support. The only other thing we talked about at our committee meeting was adopting K S A Built is the company that. As a preferred vendor for when we get our ducks lined up for the mountain biking trails at Northwood. Which we are still going through that process, but. I'm asking that you would adopt them as a vendor.
So we won't adopt it right now, we'll do it.
Well, I guess you can adopt them as a preferred vendor anytime, I, that I don't know how that works.
Yes, you can, and we have done that in the year, and we also do a roundup of preferred vendors right after, I think we do it right after town meeting, but.
Okay, whatever.
I don't want to forget it, though.
Why don't we vote to do it?
Okay, motion by Sharon to add K S A Built as a preferred vendor, these are the mountain bike folks.
Yep.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think I heard a second from Joe.
You did.
Discussion, okay. No discussion, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye, so I think that's all five of us. So the motion carries and they are a preferred vendor.
Thank you.
Ask Bill to add them to the list, please.
And the only other thing, Mary, Mary Beth, Polly has, and it's okay.
She just.
She just sent it to you and that's okay?
No, she just sent it up, some, some changes to me, so that now that I have the whole thing, I'll.
So once you look at it, that would be great, and we'll just move forward as Act two fifty moves forward for that, so. But thank you for all of your help and your eyes. To make this so that it's transparent and everybody, you know, we're following the rules to make sure the part gets, uh.
Yep.
Gets done. That's all I really have.
Any questions for Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director?
I don't have a question, but Mike, Mike, didn't you forget about the little thing you just got for the.
Oh, yeah, thanks, Joe. Yeah, so Billy, 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 um, sent me a, a flyer for a. A grant to get a fill station. And I just got news this afternoon that we were awarded the grant, so we will be, and the cost of installing it, we will have a water, a bottle fill station. That we will put at the pool and then we'll take the old. Water fountain that's at the pool and try it outside the, the back building by the baseball field, so that's about a four thousand dollar grant. That we got, I did ask the lady if she had an extra one, it was kind of cute. And I said, you know, if you have an extra one, we'll take it, and then she politely emailed me back and said, nice try, we're all set and thank you. So we are in purchase of, we are, have been awarded a water fill station. Which will, the patrons of the pool graciously appreciate because they're always asking for water. And now we'll have a filtered water fill station there, so that'll be great, so thank you to Bill for that.
Well, congratulations.
Yeah.
Available, so people who are walkers or stuff.
Well, the pool's open all the time, so they can walk in and fill. Yes, people always come in and use the bathroom, they'll say, do you have water? Can I buy a water? What we'll do is we'll take the old sink, which is actually a good water. It's like you used to have out there, which we have at the pool now, and we'll bring it to the back building where we have the restrooms as well, where the baseball fields are. And we'll just put it on the outside. We only run water during seasonal anyway, so it's not.
Well, that'll be great for the kids.
And the kids will love it to be able to get a water, they're always asking for water there too, so this is a win-win. This is really good and, you know, again, thanks for Bill for throwing that my way and you never know.
Nice work, Bill.
So they'll get some credit there.
Thank you.
And he reminded me too, and I said, I already did it like two months ago, so that was the best part, so that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, guys, have a good day.
And Bill for getting a water bottle filling station. All right, Carrie Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer.
I don't think.
Don't think she is.
No, she's not.
Just in case, we would give her the opportunity, okay? Bill Sweet, Town Administrative Assistant.
Good evening.
Mary. Mary, I didn't want to interrupt Bill, but something that Carrie would probably have brought up is that the tax payment is due next Monday, the tenth.
Thank you, yes. So if you have not yet made your tax payment, please make sure you get it in. We appreciate it greatly. It helps us run our government.
Yes, indeed.
All right, Bill.
All right.
What you got?
Uh, so, a couple of things left from the packet. So the first one is information from North Star for the annual Fourth of July fireworks.
Okay.
So. Uh, some things have developed in terms of costs from them. The, the person up there was gonna try and email me a summary, but she wasn't able to in time for tonight, so. What, what they're, what they're saying right now is due to a, a variety of influences on costs. A display for the Fourth of July, which we still have the right of first refusal for that date, is going to be ten thousand dollars.
And it has been seventy-five hundred?
For the last couple of years, yes.
Okay.
So we. Should have some money for the townwide celebration line, since we didn't spend it in, in July. So obviously, I told, I told her, our challenge obviously was that we budgeted this money a year ago that we spend right now. So there's kind of two things to this, is do we want, we, how do we want to handle this? But we also should probably discuss the budget. For fireworks for the current ones we're working on right now and, and that, because it's gonna need to go up, I'm assuming.
Okay, so I'm. Flipping through, I don't have this year's proposed, but I do have the, the current year's as past. So it looks like if we want fireworks on the Fourth of July, as we have been accustomed to, it's going to cost ten thousand rather than seventy-five hundred.
Yes.
Fourth of July fireworks, we have budgeted seventy-five hundred this year. Townwide celebration, we have budgeted twenty-five hundred, we didn't spend it last year.
Right.
Or in July.
Right.
So it looks like we have the money for. We have to pay in this fiscal year.
If we pay by January fifteenth, we get ten percent additional fireworks. We've always done that, we don't, I don't really know what ten percent less looks like, but if we pay now, we, we get, we get more, so.
Okay, what's your pleasure, folks?
I know that we pay for them now.
Yep, okay, ten thousand dollars. For Fourth of July, using, looks like the fireworks line and the townwide celebration line.
That's, so the other question is, we obviously, we're, I told her, we would, at all likelihood, want the Fourth of July date. But as we normally have, we usually designate a rain date, July fifth is a board meeting.
We always have fireworks at board meetings, what's the problem?
So.
We can always change the word.
We could, so do we want to say the fourth and the, fourth and the fifth?
Right.
I think so, we haven't voted yet. Go ahead, Joe.
Well, I'm wondering, you know, that's a Monday and, and all that, but what if we ask for a. Do them on Sunday, the third, with the fourth being the rain date. You know, people, I don't know if that's more convenient for people that have to work for a living to go out on a Sunday evening and probably will have Monday off. Versus going out on a Monday evening and have to go to work Tuesday morning.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I'm just curious, I'm trying to get to my calendar here to see what the official day is.
It's, the fourth is a Monday this year, Mary. They provided us with that information.
Okay, there it is, oh.
Yep.
So it, so it's observed on the Monday, so it's a long weekend anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's your pleasure?
What do you think?
I like Joey's idea.
I'm gonna do a townwide celebration that day too.
Yeah, and that would be easier if we did it on a weekend.
Yeah.
In, instead of.
Well, Monday, so, so the challenge, we do the, well, I guess we do the townwide celebration, that's money that's gonna come out of, well, but. How, how pay for that, because that's July third, the money.
Right, we're using that money.
We're using that money to pay for this.
We're using the townwide.
Last year's money.
That's what I thought.
Well, no.
Well, but we didn't use it. We're gonna have the townwide celebration on Jul, if you want to do one on July third, which is fine, most of the stuff we're gonna get for that, we're gonna have to pay for in June. Which is the money we're gonna use right now.
Right.
To pay for that, so it gets a little close on the. I, I don't, you know.
Can't we pay, why can't we pay upon receipt?
I, I, that's, that's my thing, like, I just. I don't, I want to make sure we're, we're taking money from the right, the right areas to do all this, so. Plus, we haven't, we haven't had a committee do that for a little while, so we're gonna have to kind of get that started up again, but.
So Billy, Billy, is the, is the discount, so is the discounted price ten thousand, is that the price and then we get the discount?
There, there is no discount.
And we get additional fireworks.
Right.
If we.
We don't get any discount, we just get fireworks.
Prepay by January fifteenth.
The price, the price is also to secure, signing it now and in January also guarantees us the date. Like, that's more of a reason to pay for it now, is that we.
Right, because you wanted it on the Fourth of July.
Well, we want it on the third of July, it sounds like.
Yeah.
Right.
Are, are we okay with that? Do we know?
We, we have, they usually come to us pretty, pretty early on to say we, because we're, we're a, we're a long time customer, so we have. A, a preference for dates.
Right.
So I can tell her third and fourth that we want to do.
Yep.
Okay.
Third for the main rain date, the fourth.
Okay.
Right.
Ten thousand dollars paid by January fifteenth. I'm interpreting that as the motion, is that everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Yes.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
All right, very good. I. The second item in the packet is an informational thing, it's a, a short thing from V L C T on. Some information security initiatives, they have contracted with a company. For this year, that's gonna make some training available and we are gonna want to do that. For, for all of our employees, it's, it's just some, some. Um, for, for all of our employees. It's, it's just some, some good information and practices. Uh, there's different options where they can, um, help us make sure that we are protecting our information diligently because, um, there's been some towns in Vermont that have been, um, victims of cyber attacks already. Um, so we, we want to definitely make sure that we are not opening ourselves up to any issue. So there's a, it's a, it's a, it's an important thing. And so we're, I'm going to take advantage of that when they get the information rolled out to us. So.
That's for information. That's B in your packet. Okay.
And, uh, C is for your new business item. And then D is the, uh, equalization study letter we got from the state of Vermont.
Okay. So this, I'm, I'm always interested in this because this tells us how close we are getting or how close we are to the common level of appraisal. Last year we were almost spot on 100%. I think we were like 100.1 or something. This year, common level of appraisal is 96.38%, um, which means our, let's see, the grand list, um, as shown is slightly lower than the actual value of our town's properties. Now, just a reminder that we don't trigger a townwide reappraisal until we're 85% or further away from 100%. So we're way far away from being out of whack, but that's good information to have. Anything else we need to take from that, Bill?
Uh, no, that was it. Uh, Carrie's going to use that to create, that, that will give us the county tax estimation for the budget. So we'll get that plugged in there as well.
Okay.
Uh, so we're waiting for that. Uh, so that's all the packet items except for C for your later on for your new business item. Uh, I got, uh, email today from VLCT, our grant, safety grant, annual one we do was approved. Uh, so, uh, we have a check coming for about $2,900. Uh, that'll go back, half, half of that will go back to each of the departments that contributed for this year. And so we'll, we've got that coming back and as expected.
Good. Thank you, Bill.
Uh, absolutely. Uh, so a couple of things for, uh, pre-time meeting, uh, PEG TV is going to be there.
Okay, good.
So, uh, they, they got confused. They thought we were having a separate, a separate meeting from the school. So when I told them we're at the school, they were very happy to hear that. So we're all set.
What time do we start at the school?
6:30.
6:30 at the school. We go first, the select board.
The date is?
This is January 11th.
Yes.
Okay.
Week from tonight.
All right. And we're live and in person. Is the school district able to provide the Zoom capacity? Are we still waiting to hear? Not confirmed. Okay.
We will be live and in person, but whether or not we can get remote and in person, we'll, we'll, we'll find out.
Okay.
Still working on that part of it. I, other thing is the, so town meeting day is March 1st.
Right.
So that means our next me, public meeting needs to be February 28th. Correct?
That is the night before town meeting when we go through the budgets again. That's the, that's our town meeting explanation meeting.
Yes.
And it's in February. It's the split of the two. So just because Bill and I were like, trying to figure this out. So everything is early this year. The pre, the town meeting.
Everything's early.
Um, Monday night explanation session is the 28th of February. The next day is March 1st. We do the Australian balloting, March 1st.
So I'm assuming we're going to plan for the same 6:30 start time and, and duplicate the event.
Yes, please.
Okay. Uh, all right. So we'll put up our notices and everything for that. And, uh, for the town report, uh, department head reports and the dedication are needed as soon as possible. Uh, I am going to be starting, really get it. We've got some things, but it is due to the printer the afternoon of the 20th. So I have roughly seven and a half working days to do the entire report from beginning to end. So the school's going to, the school's got to get a hard deadline. I mean, so I've gotten a couple of department head reports. Um, and I got the one from, uh, Jim Schultz. So the rest of them, uh, we need them. I got, I think I, I got mics. Uh, so I've got, I've got a couple. I got Byron for cemetery. So we've got some things coming together, but there's still a, a whole bunch of stuff that's in the middle that's not there yet. So, um, but yeah, we have, I have seven and a half days to put this together and that's, talk about things being short timing. That's a, a short timing. So, uh, Friday morning, after the planning commission is done here Thursday night, Friday morning, this room, I'm going to take over this room for, until, until it's done. So.
Yeah. You do make a mess of the room. We've seen that, but it's a, a working mess.
Yeah. It's a, it's a working mess, but it'll, it'll be a working mess again.
Okay. And that reminds me too, I owe you a.
The dedication. Yeah, the dedication.
Yep.
Um, so other than that, I think we've got everything, um.
Who are you, are you scheduling pictures?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, so we, 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 we didn't do them. We didn't redo them last year. So we, but we do need to do it this year.
We do.
Uh, probably the best time is going to be at the school next week.
Okay.
Because we should all be there. So that will be our best.
Dress up in your party clothes so that we're members, so we can get a nice picture of us.
Yep.
All right.
Where are your pink, the pink?
The one that you got the. All right, enough living.
So, uh, yeah. So I mean, we, we should get some updated pictures. That would be, would be good. So, uh, if we can, uh, anybody that would like to have an updated picture from the report, um, last year, otherwise we get to reuse them. That's the only way to do it.
Yeah.
Uh, so please be at the school for, for next week and we'll, we'll get them done then.
When are we at the school?
We start at six, we start at 6:30.
Yeah, but, okay.
Yeah, we don't have a select board meeting before that, which is unusual.
Right.
Right.
Helpful, not unusual.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Unusual. So maybe we'll do the, we could do, maybe do the picture afterwards because we will get out so the school board can go in and then we can, we can wrap that up afterwards and.
Okay. We have some new police department members that should have their.
We have, we have a plan.
Excellent. All right.
We'll hope, we'll hope, I'm hoping the plan comes through, but we have a, we have a plan. So.
All right. Any other questions for Bill Sweet, our town administrative assistant to the select board? All right, that takes care of that. That goes there. Um, so it looks like maybe I'll bring this up now. We have had a request from Nancy McGuire of the Rutland Natural Resources Conservation District. They want to use our, uh, Town Highway Garage, one of the bays to distribute their tree sale, um, annual fundraiser.
Give a letter on your desk, Sharon, from her.
And that would be for, uh, well, they set up April 25th and through April 29th. The letter from them is January 3rd. Uh, let's see, the distribution day. Hmm, I'm not sure which one it is. It's usually a Saturday.
I think so.
That's the distribution day. Um, they use, they, they've been here a number of years. Walt Tripp has given his approval, according to the letter. Um, they're, I've enjoyed it. I mean, I, I always get some trees and then I forget to plant them, some of them. So, but anyway. Um, excellent way of not only a fundraiser for the district, but getting some really good prices on fruit and nuts and berry trees. So, you know, keep, and, and bushes and other things too. Um, they're seeking our permission to use the highway garage. Is there a motion?
Motion to let them use it.
Motion made and seconded on, and Sharon, any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So what do they want to use it for?
They, they use one of the bays to set up, um, and distribute the trees and bushes that folks have pre-ordered and, and prepaid for. Um, and this is the pickup place.
I think we've done it several years.
We've done it. Yeah. Cause I've picked up there several years. Um, and there's, it's, I mean, it's a really well-run operation. They, they have your name already. They've already sorted out the bushes that you're to pick up. Your name is already on it. It's marked paid and you just stop by, load it into the back of your car and you're all set.
And they use.
So this is like a one-day event?
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's spread over a few days because they have to set up and sort. But the distribution day is usually just.
Wondering with, with, with the new town truck, shouldn't we be asking the guys, do we have room for this?
Well, the, um, the letter says that Nancy has spoken to Walter Tripp and he said he's aware of how this works and that he approves the natural resource district to use one of the bays in the building as long as it's okay with the select board.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right. We're in the middle of the vote.
We are in the middle of the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye? Motion carries. So if you could let them know or let Nancy know, I'd appreciate it. This year, I'll see if I can get them into the ground faster. Okay.
Where do you get the list for the trees?
You go on the website for the Rutland Natural Resource Conservation.
Might be, it might be in that letter too. I think you had to look at it.
They'll tell you when they're going to start taking orders and then you fill out your order form and send a check in. And, um, then you have to show up and pick up your stuff. They also do brown trout and rainbow trout. If you should have a pond, you can stock your pond.
I do have a pond.
Well, there you go. But I also had some blue herons and that took care of the fish population.
I have some blue herons too, so I guess.
All right. Anything else for Bill? All right.
No, just thank, thank Bill for the, uh, highway radio looking into and getting that done. I appreciate his time.
Yep, no problem. That worked, that kind of, kind of came together pretty quick and easy. It was, they were, the, the guys from CBC were very helpful with that. So.
I mean, it's a safety issue if nothing else. You know?
No problem. Okay.
Okay. Uh, John Paul Thigman, Town Health Officer, and we do have, you recall that we adopted the mask ordinance, the, um, mask ordinance statute requires that we, uh, we consider this every, reconsider this every 30 days, um, to, whether to rescind or extend the rule for an additional 30-day period. JP, what's your recommend?
So I'd recommend we do continue it for an additional 30 days, uh, especially given the number of cases that we're experiencing. We know that the masks, while they may not prevent everyone from catching the virus, certainly slows the spread and we need to do that for our health services. So there's a lot of good reasons to extend it and I would move that we extend it.
Motion's been made to extend the mask ordinance for an additional 30 days. Is there a second?
Second.
Sharon seconds. Discussion. If none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Um, JP, I'm assuming you said aye. I couldn't hear you though.
I did.
I did too, Mary.
Okay, got you too. So we've got four. Don?
I'm opposed.
Uh, one, no. Okay. Now I do have the ordinance here, so I'll sign it. Pass it to Sharon. Okay. Anything else from our health officer?
That's all I have tonight.
Okay. Thank you, JP. Um, committee meetings and updates. I know that the personnel and highway committee meeting committees met together. And, uh, Sharon, do you want to do a recap and a recommend for the board on what you discussed?
Uh, I think we, I think we already discussed it. Joey, is there anything you want to add to?
Uh, no, just.
I want to do that.
Yeah, true. So Mary, um, um, I kind of chaired the meeting, so maybe, you know, I'll, I'll speak to it and, uh, we discussed Byron's situation. And when we first were presented with this stuff, um, it kind of took some of us by surprise and I wasn't sure what was going on. So then we went, when the second meeting was scheduled, um, went through the, uh, town's personnel policies and read what's in there. And there's nothing in there that, um, specifically states how, when an employee can take their vacation time. And it was determined by those of us at the meeting that we all knew Byron was going to be using his vacation time from the day before Thanksgiving till the end of the year to finish out his time with the town. So it was kind of a moot point at that point for us to do anything to take that away from him. And, and we were in error when we voted the first time to only pay him, um, I think it was like 104 hours. Uh, the board had approved in 2019 that high, uh, town employees can carry over two years of sick time, which is 20 days. And then the, his vacation time being five weeks, Byron had it figured out pretty much right to the day that the days he would take off. The, uh, employee policy says that upon leaving, an employee can take half of their sick, um, time hours. So it would total 240 hours and Byron was asking for 120 plus 24 days of vacation time, which, because he had taken one off, he was entitled to 25. And, and I, I don't know why we didn't understand this and why there was any discussion. Um, Carrie, you know, was put in the uncomfortable position because she didn't understand it. And, and so she has to make some, uh, decisions and she asked us for help. And unfortunately, um, we didn't do it right. Um, you know, Byron was entitled to the time and he had it all figured out and everything is proper and in order. And the committee would recommend that, um, we pay him his vacation time as requested and his sick time as requested. And, um, I will make that in form of a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, motions made and seconded to, um, pay Byron Hathaway what he had requested for, uh, sick time and vacation time toward, um, and that is outlined on what's called Byron's correct pay schedule. Okay, any discussion?
Did the committee make a determination as to what Byron's work year was?
It did JP, but there is nothing that says that an employee has to earn their vacation time. So the way.
Certainly, I take, I take issue with that. There most certainly is. The word accrue is used when describing vacation time. And accrue by its normal meaning means to collect over time. I mean, that's a term of art that's used in all employee handbooks. And so.
Right JP, right JP.
But my first, but my first question was, did you determine what his employment year was? And so I just wanted to know what it was. What month to what month is his annual anniversary?
Well, let them, let these guys have their discussion.
Okay, Joe, do you want to respond?
I believe, I believe the employment time is July 1st to June 30th. So Byron has technically worked five full months and he was taking the last month off of his time because.
And did, and, and in his computation, does he take the full five weeks of vacation from July 1st to June 1st? Does he take that full five weeks?
It, it doesn't specify in there how you accrue your vacation time. There's, there's no formula.
Was it, that wasn't my question. That wasn't my question. My question was, did he take the five weeks as if he worked through June 30th?
Okay, so we have two other people in on that meeting, um, Dawn and Sharon. Do either of you want to?
What, what we couldn't find JP and, you know, there, there's been some precedence. We have paid other people in full. So in light of that, until we clarify our ordinance, I feel in all fairness that we need to pay him.
Well, I can live with that, but I can't live with somebody saying the word accrual is not in the policy because it is.
It, it is, but it's not, it's not spelled out. It doesn't, you can, i- if, if I was in that position, like say I worked a month and I accrued my time. It, it, you have to spell that out, that if you are going to, um, prorate vacation time, then it's going to say it's earned at such and such a rate, per week, per month, per hour, per day, something has to explain it because I could believe that four months or five months of work, I'm entitled to it. And, and, and the other thing is, is if you have to work a full year to get five weeks off, when do you take it? Because you can't carry it over, so you would have to take your vacation the last five. when do you take it? Because you can't carry it over, so you would have to take your vacation the last five weeks of the fiscal year. I mean, it's very vague and it needs to be addressed. And until it's addressed, we have to work with what we have. There's no formula for.
Don has, Don has been trying to get, um. Let's let Don comment, please.
Um, JP, it's a sticky wicket, okay? And, um, I was I was in agreement that the money be paid, but here's here's my take on this. First of all, according to our policy, we are not obliged to pay him that money. Um, we're not obliged to pay it. And I don't believe that if we, when we get ready to delve into this particular issue and come up with a policy that the board would approve, that we would not approve anyone getting paid vacation time for days that they haven't even showed up to work. In other words, the resignation meant that he wasn't employed for six months that he's taken vacation time for. And I don't feel that's appropriate. However, morally and ethically, if we paid other people under the same relatively the same circumstances, whether it's whether we're legally bound or not, I think we're ethically bound to do the same for him that we've done for others until we redefine our our policy. But I agree with you, JP. Um, I asked the question. Your term ended in two thousand twenty-three. So you have another full year of your term that you were elected to. You're not asking for any vacation time for that year, which you're not working. Why would you ask for vacation time for the six months that you're not working?
Well, I think, you know, all that's.
I I let me respond. Let me respond to Don on that. I I think, Don, that that what you just said makes perfect sense. And and I have to agree with it. My concern is that, you know, uh, we've had public statements made now apparently by one of his sons that he wasn't treated fairly on the way out. But the truth of the matter is Byron had agreed to stay through twenty twenty-two to help us with the transition to an appointed commissioner. And the minute we began asking questions about the extra contractual payments to his son and how it was determined who would get the callouts on the snowplow and where the independent snowplow contracts were involving his son, he just abruptly decided he was going to retire this year. And 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 that whole presentation that we're somehow the bad guy in this scenario bothers me because, as you say, we have worked with every other employee who was looking to transition either to another job or to another situation. And I don't understand why or how it went bad here, but we were just asking some basic questions that we still don't have the answers to. So that's my piece.
Okay. All right, Sharon?
You know, JP, I understand what you're saying, but I think it's all gotten away from us and I think in all fairness, if we look what we did with the last couple of employees they've got done, we paid them the full amount. I just, I guess I want to put it to bed and we need to deal with the ordinance.
You have the better argument, Sharon. I say you have the better argument. I'm agreeing with you.
Okay, so I'll make it more.
I'm just, I'm just, okay. Yeah, you can see them, you know, I just wanted to explain where I was coming.
The motion that we pay Byron.
Like, isn't the motion already made?
Yeah, I made the motion.
Sharon seconded. Any further discussion?
I just want, I, for my part, I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote yes on this on this motion. And I'm going to do so because I think, under the circumstances, that we have to be fair. Uh, but I also think that this undefined policy is very poorly done and.
So that's why we've got to look at that ordinance and and work on it.
Personnel policy, yeah.
Right.
But I want I I want everybody to know that when when the original motion not to pay or the original motion to pay under option two, which was half of that, I was assuming that that was, that pay was for time period from now up until June thirtieth, the end of the fiscal year. And that with he being not employed by the town, that he wasn't entitled to that. But that.
All right.
Those monies had been paid to other people under the same circumstances and it would be unfair to treat him differently.
Okay.
There was nothing done nefariously and there was nothing done vindictively against Byron Hathaway. He was he's a valuable employee of the town. We know that. We've said that. And I just think that we should treat him with the same fairness that we treated other people.
Okay. Any further comments? If not pending motion is to pay for Byron's sick pay and vacation time as he presented. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Uh, checking to see what else we have. Anything else from the Personnel Highway Committee or was that pretty much what you were?
Now, we we beat that to death. Other than, Mary, that the we would recommend that, um, the the town's personnel policy, um, some things need to be clarified. Uh, the doubling of the carryover for sick time is not in the policy. And and that they just need to reflect that. So, um, going forward, we won't have this. The other thing that, uh, we came up with is that we would definitely recommend that the town have a separation or exit strategy for employees that leave so that we don't run into this stuff again where people's feelings get hurt and people get angry and and things get said that shouldn't need to be said. And, you know, stuff just gets in the way. So that would be what we came up with. That we just need to have this policy in place.
Okay, so, thank you, Joe. Um, I'm going to ask Bill to add the review of the personnel policy to the tasks under the Personnel Committee. So. All right, thank you. All right, anything else from, I think Personnel Highway, that was it for you folks. Recreation Committee, we heard from, um, from the report earlier. The project list is right there.
Can we take fireworks station lawsuit off the list?
Um, fire station, Center Rowan Fire Station lawsuit, yes, you may take that off the list.
Cool.
Yeah, isn't that nice? Okay, under new business, we have covered A and B and C. C was ratifying the mask order. D is discussing appointing a point person for the public safety building project. Um, this, I I asked Bill to put this on the agenda. It occurred to me that um, we we had been assuming it was JP. And in fact, when we sent out a letter to an adjoining property owner, we designated JP as the point person. But of course, that letter was, you know, just for that person. We also designated JP in the contract with the architect as the point person. Um, but that was just a contract with the architect, so I think it would be wise if we appointed JP as the point person overall for the public safety building project.
I second that.
I can't make a motion, so.
Don't worry.
Sharon made the motion.
I'll second it.
Joe? Joe seconded. Discussion.
And now JP, you don't get to say no.
Um, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. I don't know if JP voted or not, but the motion carries. Thank you, JP, for volunteering.
Okay, thank you.
You've done a good job, JP.
Yes, indeed. Um, next is, we've got the pre-town meeting coming up next uh, Tuesday. Uh, we have, I just, in in past years, we've sort of at the last minute said, hey, could you cover this budget or could you cover this budget? And I thought it might be a little better if we just agreed on who would cover what. So general budget, um, if there are no objections, I'll cover that. And that would start with the pay increase and why we determine that.
Mary?
Um, yes.
Um, do we need to adjust these budgets just a little? Like the general budget to reflect the new amount for fireworks and coming for the twenty-two, twenty-three year? Do we do we need to look at that now?
We can do it. We can do it now or we can do it, and I think we've done this in the past, right after the pre-town meeting, we reconvene the select board and we do a couple of quick motions to scrub up.
I'm just wondering if we should just. I I'm just wondering if we should just show that fireworks line as being ten thousand so that it'll reflect a little more. It's only a couple of, you know, twenty-five hundred, but it's going to change the bottom line that we're going to be presenting next week. And and it would be the same with highway. You know, we're we're going to add a couple of thousand in there for the radio stuff. So it does change them slightly. It's not it's not a great amount, but it would reflect the the accurate numbers that folks will get to see next Tuesday.
Well, technically speaking, legally speaking, the reason that you have pre-town meeting is so that anyone, whether it's board members or members of the public can bring up changes, suggestions, deletions from that presented budget that can then be acted on before you actually do town meeting. So we legally, what we do is we take suggestions from the people and if we want to make changes, we make them at that that quickie meeting that we have prior to the so, prior to the town meeting.
No, well, no, it's right after the pre-town meeting. We reconvene to to approve the budget as whatever.
Well, we've done some changes in that meeting that takes place directly before the pre uh, town meeting, too.
Sometimes, but there's not going to be one this year.
Right.
There usually is a board meeting right before that.
But there's not this year.
Because today's the meeting. Yeah, we tried. So I guess the point, Joe, is can this wait until after we hear the citizens' comments at the pre-town meeting? Then we reconvene, then we convene a meeting of the select board and Bill needs to warn that, if you would, please. For immediately, wait, 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 immediately after to take up any amendments to the budget. Don?
And when you're presenting the general budget to the people at the meeting, you can tell them that what we intend to do is increase this by this much because.
I can do that, Don. Why don't I do that?
And then that would be a good idea.
Why don't we get moving?
I just don't understand why we're going to go through all this. Do it once. But I'll do whatever you guys want. I'm I'm just following them. I've already written in my copy.
Okay, yeah, and I and I will in mind, we were just anticipating there could be other changes, I guess, is my point.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so police budget.
I don't mind doing it.
Sharon?
I'll work with you. Yep.
Fire budget.
The point man.
Point person.
JP.
JP. Highway budget.
I'll do highway, Mary.
Joe, rec.
That's me.
Oh.
Don.
Okay, yep.
Now, we have ballot items and it would be good to know who's going to talk to each. Um, the McKinley Station bond. JP, probably.
Okay.
Okay. Uh.
I'll help you with that, JP, if you want.
Okay, that'd be great, Don.
Okay, the marijuana sales.
I'm not helping you with that one.
JP?
Fine.
The air is blue in our neighborhood, ain't it?
Cash to, is it blue? I don't know. I don't. Cash to close shift of half, half a million or whatever to the fire Center Rowan Fire Station bond. I can take that because I just love stuff like that. Unless somebody else would rather do it.
No.
No.
The rec, the rec commission, the rec committee recommend to increase the capital improvements.
I don't mind giving that.
Sharon?
Well, actually, yeah.
And the road commissioner from elected to appointed. Who wants to do that?
I'll answer questions for that, Mary.
Okay, thank you, Joe. All right. So. Good. I I feel better knowing that we're each responsible for a part of it. Everybody plans on being there on the eleventh, right? Great, okay.
Didn't hear anything. I didn't hear anything from anybody.
Is that when I make grinders?
Yes, Sharon's going to feed us, show up.
Oh, is that when we get the meatball grinders?
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, um. Old business. Sorry, Joe.
I was just going to say, this will be, this will be the first meeting that I guess all of our faces will be present because, um, I'm trying to be extra cautious about this whole virus thing. And that, yeah, it's nothing personal that I don't come there in person.
Listen, I commend you that you don't.
We don't take it personally, Joe.
No, you're responsible.
All right, any other new business to come before the board? Any other new business? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Amen.
Go move to adjourn.
That's a motion. Seconded by JP. Thank you all for a lot of good work we got done tonight. All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned.
Thank you.